What's some missing parking areas that were not there after the curb was put in? One in particular, I believe it's uh 203. Had initially had a driveway in and that wasn't a drivable curb that was put in for him to continue parking off street like we had then.
201 also.
201 also, correct. The street just seemed a lot narrower and Steve and I both agreed with the residents that it was. I can remember when we were starting this project and there was discussion about narrowing this street. And I expressed a lot of concerns at that time that it should not be narrowed. Because we were already having issues with emergency vehicles down there. So for that reason, rather than allow the project to just move forward and nothing be said, with all the concerns of the residents, that was my reason for calling the meeting.
Okay. All right, Chris. So you know, we went through our original design, we have a handful of streets in this area that were Minnesota Street, Elm Street, 27 feet or so is what the blacktop was in a lot of those areas. And then the first third, third of the block on Third Street was also narrowed about 27 feet. Slightly widened out in the middle and widened out quite a bit more at the end. So during the design process, it didn't actually stand out to us too much because there were other streets of that width in that area and also in the rest of town. We had chosen 28 feet, which was, is the the minimum for parking on one side of the road per state statute. So that was seen close to what was, what we thought was there before, but after talking to all the residents and that concern being brought up through here, we definitely realized that there's a lot more parking need here on this street than maybe some of those other streets that are narrower. And we certainly don't want to be causing issues for emergency services or just garbage trucks or anything else that needs to go through there or just, just the residents that are on those streets. So as far as the history of why it came out 28 feet, it, it was just kind of looking at the beginning of the street and unfortunately we just didn't carry it all the way through to the north side where it had been widened out, so. As far as how to, how to address that at this point, I have sent out a drawing for council to look at for options for widening that street back out to about 38 feet is what that shows, it could go slightly wider. That would just be on the north third of the block or so, which is where the street had been wider before, but still keep that same 28 foot width on the southern portion of it. And that's kind of what I want to discuss here is looking at options for doing that widening. It does involve some curb being removed. And, and putting in a driveway curb cut so that that curb be mounted and some parking stalls be added on the north and west side of Third Street. Yeah, I guess I do regret not looking at that north end a little bit closer because we looked at the south end first and 28 feet was fitting pretty well because that's what it was in the south side, just the north end had been, had been wider, so. We do want to look at options for, for improving Third Street to get that additional parking need addressed that this road has. So the option I have shown in there is to remove probably between 80 and 100 feet of curb on the north and west side. Basically, there's a handful of driveways so the high back curb that's installed will be removed, reinstalled with driveway curb cut. And then a, a blacktop about 10 feet wide and 160 feet long, if you include the driveways, would be paved on that side, so it'd be a bump out for parking only, which would get the on-street parking out of the main road. So it should be 28 feet minus whatever could be used up by a car parking on the east side, which usually count eight, nine feet for, for parking. So hope that would address the need for getting vehicles up and down that road and still provide that off-street parking or on-street parking need.
Will you be removing that tree? The big tree on, is that the west side, Mike? In front of. Because the roots are already all dug up. So they're exposed and they're dug up and the tree is so large.
Sorry, that's the one on the east side of the street we're talking about here? Yep, yep. Okay, I guess I didn't look at that tree specifically, I thought we had gotten past it with the curb. If we haven't and there's desire to take that tree down, we can, we can talk about it, otherwise we couldn't see. I mean, I hate taking on trees if we don't have to.
Well, I guess it was just expressed that if it dies, it's and because it's already dug up that it would fall on some, it's going to damage a lot. It's a pretty big tree.
Sure, no, I understand. Yeah, and that was, that was part of the goal when we put that road back in there, we had looked at the trees and on the east side, the trees, especially behind where there was curb before, and the little further north of that were pretty close to the old curb. So we'd push that curb in about what, to the west to try to get as much room as we could. And then we put in that 28 feet after that, but, but yeah, it does appear that, that looks like the old road probably was wound around that tree when it's paved. They had a little bit of a curve in it, so they probably purposely had gone around that at one point. I can take a look at it, I guess I'm not a tree expert to tell you what's going to happen at the long term that that would take an arborist or someone like that to really give a good call on it. But I guess if, if, if there's desire to take it down, I could coordinate that. If that is what wants to happen, if you want to leave it and see what happens, that's certainly an option too.
Well, I don't.
I don't want to speak for the resident because.
Yeah, my house isn't going to get damaged if it falls, I guess, so.
Chris, I have a question on the drawing. Is, is you come around the corner and start going north on South Third Street?
Yes.
It almost looks like from the curve up until 207 that the road actually narrows again. And I'm wondering why that can't just be straight?
So for what we have, well, the, the road is straight. We didn't change the width on, on Third Street, so it is, there's 25 feet of blacktop. And then there's two feet, two inches of curb on either side, it's a straight road. It can be kind of deceiving, we see the curb cuts and different widths and different, not widths, but the different types of curb out there in person, I, I know some people kind of looked like it, looked like it was kind of narrowing at the end there. And I think it's just perspective because I was measuring 25 feet of blacktop everywhere, so. It doesn't actually curve, but we did kind of correct the old alignment and we straightened the road out from where it used to be on the west side a little bit more and then kind of swung over. And what we tried to do is get the road to be more centered in the right of way, so we had, we had gone for on that.
So the width of the road at the old curb, is that the same as the width of the road directly across from the first west driveway, Arby Tuminas, and the first east driveway? Is that the same width there?
The current width, yes, it's, it's exact same the whole way through on Third Street. What it used to be was between 27 and 30 feet for the first maybe three quarters of the street, so it used to vary quite a bit, but, but yeah, for what is out there now, it's exactly the same width throughout. The curve coming into Third Street from, from Minnesota, we did kind of widen it at the intersection, so it's not, it's not consistently 28 feet through that, through that curb. It does widen out with two different radius to kind of improve that turn. Turn for vehicles, so. But otherwise it is consistently 28 feet. We use face-to-face measurements when we do streets, which is just the usable portion of the road. That's the face of the curb to the face of the curb. And the areas where they have ribbon curb only, that can be a little bit maybe deceptive because we still held that same back width. So that, in those areas of streets might actually appear about eight inches wider on each side because you can drive on that concrete shoulder and you can't do that on the B-style, so. Those are technically the same width, but they're, they might appear about 16 inches wider because of that ribbon curb.
Okay, and then in front of 203, where that, where, I, I am assuming the red lines on here is where the proposed curb will be?
The red line on there was where the old blacktop used to be.
Okay.
So I understand everyone here maybe can see that in color, I'm not sure if that's printed in color or not, but the red line is where the old blacktop edge used to be.
So you're, are you proposing to place the curb there or where is the curb going to be?
What, what my proposal here would be to maintain, retain the curb on the east side of the road. And on the west side between the driveway for 205 and then the levee would be to pave 10 feet of blacktop behind the curb, so we would take out the high back curb. We'd maintain that same line, so it wouldn't actually, the road itself wouldn't, the, the usable portion of the road itself wouldn't actually widen. We'd just be adding parking bays to the road, so effectively you'd have a 38 foot wide road, 35, 38 feet, eight inches technically, of usable space and then you get all those parked vehicles off the road, which I think is, seems to be the biggest concern as I've heard and maybe get that confirmed, but just the biggest concern is if there's vehicles parked in the road, are they in the way of other vehicles using it? This gets them off of the road and provides parking for everybody. And 10 feet is, you know, what I'm proposing. It could probably be a little bit wider. I've talked to some residents down there about other options, the, the owner of 201, 203, I talked to her about doing a wider patch just in front of those two houses and not carrying it all the way south, but we could go 16 feet, you could pretty much have perpendicular parking in there instead of parallel parking. So that'd be paving up to the fence instead, so that would be another alternate option, so. If you wanted, if you would say that I'm parallel parking, you have perpendicular, you can fit twice as many cars. And it's easier to turn in and out of there as well, so that's a secondary option as well.
So the radius next to the dyke is going to be somewhat bigger here the way you're on, right?
Next to the dyke could be somewhat larger. Maybe, yeah, I guess we're slightly narrow on the east side, slightly wider on the west side, it's probably about where it was total width. We can make some additional, we're, we're planning to do a concrete apron at the alley going into the, going near the levee on the east side. So I mean, there's that additional ability to pave maybe a little bit of that, to give a little hard surfacing for vehicles to turn around on in addition to the, the parking spaces that we're talking about. I don't, I haven't seen the garbage trucks navigate down here, if that's what they do, if they do a three-point turn or five-point turn or whatever it takes to make it around, or at least what they did in the past, is, is probably a little deceptive over the winter because if anything, a little wider than it used to be. Because everything that got growled in over winter. The contractor filled in where the old road was with gravel, so a lot of cases they actually built the road subbase wider than it used to be, so. I'm sure over winter, those, those roads are probably four or five feet wider than what they are now. And I'm sure that was probably one of the more shocking things, once that curb went in there, that it definitely felt even more narrower because of that reason.
What will the opening be on the west side at the end of, end of Third Street? Next to the dyke for the, the alley access there?
Yeah, so on the east side, we had put it where the end of the old curb was, so it'd be I don't have the exact dimension on here, but it's probably somewhere in the order of 15 or 16 feet, I imagine. We had tried to match into the old gravel limits, so it should be the same effective opening that it was before.
So our, on the west side, we'd carpet it so much that the city alone. Oh, I'm talking down with the dyke. There's nothing at all there?
Yeah, you can see it's very narrow, you see where the, where the little bit of property is. It's pretty much going out, and I don't need to scale that.
Yeah, the, the drawing we have here shows that, that dark black circle is the property corner, so that was a located corner. And that's right at the corner of the fence.
That's five feet, that's not any kind of road at all.
Yeah. Yeah, in our drawings, we do show the right of way and the right of way is pretty much right at that fence line. That side, so I mentioned the secondary option would be to, to pave wider. I mean, not quite as long to allow more perpendicular parking. That's what that would entail, or it could be just right at the end, could be wide from 10 feet to, to about 15 feet. There's a turnaround called a hammerhead, which allows a three-point turn, so you basically would go a little more room to pull forward and then back up into the alley and then pull out would be the, what could happen in that as well.
And then the grade of the road, looking at it Sunday, it appeared from where the original road was to where the top of the curb currently is, there was about a eight to 12 inch drop, so was that grade lowered?
Not consistently, so when we design roads, we don't look at it from, you know, say how it used to fit, we look at how it fits driveways and the yard. So when I design a road, I run a cross-section through it. So that cross-section that we have here is 2% going down slope on the west side and 3% going down slope on the east side. And then we developed a crown going down the middle so that we can have a road where the drainage on one side of the road is going into that gutter line, drainage on the other side is going on the other side. So when we design a road, we, we bring that all the way through and we try to fit all the driveways in the yards that were not trapping water in areas that we don't want to trap water. On the north side, we had some flatter yards and so the road came down, pulled down the north side. And then we had a profile that brought all that drainage to the south. We have a couple of profile grades in there, about 0.75%, which would be 0.75 feet, nine inches over 100 feet, is what that means. By the time you get to the south end, it's pretty much matching where it was. We had some flatter driveways on the east side, we definitely couldn't bring that up, we didn't want to, so. By the time you get to the, the south end, we're pretty much exactly where it was on the north end. Where it matched into the levee, it is slightly lower, it's, it's a little deceiving because we have grade coming into it and the old blacktop on the west side was higher than the east side. So that road used to be tipped, where all, everything is draining to the east side of the road. And so now that we have that crown, the west side came down, east side stayed pretty similar to where it was. So I think it's a little deceiving looking at what it used to be because we did add that crown in there trying to make sure we aren't sending all the water to one, basically all sent it all one, one spot before and we're trying to, trying to limit how much drainage is going through onto the east side. And you'll, you'll probably kind of notice that on most streets in the area, most streets I've reconstructed generally don't end up higher than they used to be, they usually end up just slightly lower. And it's just the way that they fit sometimes, but we, we feel like when it's, when it's paved out there, it's going to match to the driveways basically where they were and that's, that's usually our goal is make sure the driveways are working out well. The, the west side is definitely considerably higher than the east side, in the middle of the block especially, so that was one of the challenges.
Then there seemed to be kind of a low spot on the east side, kind of near 208 and 210 down in there. Is there a low spot or is that not a low spot?
There shouldn't be, we changed grades, so that could look like a low spot, we had 0.75%, then went to 0.35% around that area, so there was a grade break. So, but it still is sloping, sloping south. One thing we did on this project, and it, it can be a little tricky when we have two different types of curb when they transition between the two. But we did design everything for the tall curb and then when we staked it, we told the contractors run your curb for the B, the six inch tall height. And then they can adjust their machine down to eliminate that, and they'd actually provided a customized chute on their machine to form the curb that we had on here, so it was the same width of curb as the taller stuff. And that would ensure that the transitions didn't end up with little, low points or high points, it was just all continuous. But yeah, the grade break may appear to be a low point because it's just, it goes from 0.75%, which is pretty good grade, to 0.35%, which is pretty flat. We would certainly have more grade out there if there was storm sewer, but there's just no storm sewer.
So with that grade change in a year, we find out that there's water pooling there, what's the, what do we do?
Yeah, you know, with, with 0.35%, that means four inches of fall over 100 feet. There's not a lot of fall. From the constructability point of view, 0.3%, 0.30% is considered the bare minimum. So we're slightly higher than that. The reality was we couldn't get more grade out of there without ending up with, if we have a flat driveway in the south end and we increase that grade as we go further north, for instance, trying to get more, more slope on that curb. By the time you get to the next driveway, we're too high and so we had to run it towards that minimum grade. Will there be settlement out there? I mean, every construction project's got some, some settlement in it, but my, my feeling is that this concrete curbing gutter is going to provide a better drainage way than the old blacktop would have. If you tried paving, if you tried paving a gutter out of blacktop, the machines don't, don't normally work that well. Doing that, they use a lot of handwork and you cause a lot more problems, so I guess it was before when you had grass meeting the edge of the blacktop, you had all that water running along the edge of the grass. You're probably more likely to trap water and have more issues with settlement and that kind of an issue, kind of a situation, but having that long continuous concrete curbing gutter is going to hopefully bridge over any settlements that could occur and help get that water south like it should. Basically, everything on the east side, east half of that road from the last driveway to the north, everything is running south into that, that corner. Yeah, it's, okay, so that's one area that when we, when the concrete curb was formed there, the, the low point in the curb is about six feet, five feet south of the last driveway, which was their intent to get all the water past that driveway. We have a 0.35% from one direction, 0.5%, it's very, you can barely tell there's a low point in there, quite honestly. From the point of someone driving on the road, it's probably a good thing. But making sure that the water's getting down there, we are probably going to take out a chunk of that, we will be taking out a chunk of that concrete curbing gutter to make sure. The, the last culvert. So could, could we have extended storm sewer up the road is what you're asking? The, the culvert there has, and I can probably figure out something, the exact dimensions on this, we use there's a culvert, yeah, we, we installed a new culvert, there used to be a metal culvert. We installed a culvert called an arch pipe, it's just a little flatter squash pipe because we didn't really have any cover over it, so. I think when I looked at doing a structure there before, we put in a catch basin at the corner. I don't think we would have had enough fill to put, you have a pipe, we have some amount of structure on top of it, we have a six inch slab and then we have seven inch iron on top of that for the frame. We went to middle to fit all of that into that curb line. There's, I think, and I, I got the drawings here, but I think there's only about a foot of cover. There's about a foot of cover over top of that culvert, it's, it's lower than I would like to see, so we used a heavier class pipe. Could we have fit a structure on top of it? Yep. Yep. Yes. I can find that. Spare with me. We did look at adding storm catch basins at that corner. We established we couldn't get a catch basin on top of that pipe just because of how shallow it was. There are some very shallow structures out there and what ends up happening is that they reflect through into the, into the pavement above them because the pavement's usually sitting around on top of the concrete in that situation. And we didn't want to have that happen. But how much fall in total from the north end to the south end? So at, at the end of the road, sorry. It's a lot harder to do this on a phone. Yeah, so at, at the match point at the end, we had an elevation. Yeah, the, the, the end of the road, we had an elevation of 735. There's two feet, three inches of fall across the thing. Two feet, three inches is what it happens, yeah. There are vaults, there are Ts that can be installed, you want to make sure they're accessible, so we don't normally do a T. The structure, I got this on another drawing here. It, it kind of came down to as far as whether or not we put in a, a catch basin there, was what was the, the benefit of that catch basin, so. On a road like this, normally we do catch basin spacing about every block, 300 feet to 400 feet, we put in catch basins. Sometimes more if there's more of a drainage area. What, it, it appeared, you know, if we put catch basins at the end of that road. As far as the, the drainage patterns, the drainage patterns aren't going to be any different than they were before we started the project. I mean, Third Street was taking that storm water before. Okay, I'm not sure how much water is coming off the north end that we would have caught, but I guess we didn't, we didn't look at that as, as being a significant issue as far as how much water is coming through. So I, I understand what you're, you're getting at, is that you're trying to catch the water before it gets to Third Street is what you're maybe trying to get at there, but. As far as the, the drainage patterns, I mean, if, if there was water sitting in the street before because of little low points and dips and all that kind of stuff, it's addressed with the curb. If there's issues with flooding because there's just too much water coming in, I guess I hadn't heard that before, so.
If you're going to catch the water, you know, maybe if you put a, you put a catch basin at 80 feet, 80 feet north of the
south of the levee, so basically those first two, those first two locks, it could be, you guys use two locks, I mean, that's, if you, if they're not, they put a catch basin right there to catch the water, they go, they know, two locks rather than ever go above ground, but.
I think as long as that culvert stays open, I mean, it all kind of runs down the rest of us.
Yeah, I was going to mention that, so that's the thing, I took pictures.
Yeah, concrete crews don't come back till Monday and I want, before we take any curb out, I wanted to talk about tonight, so. Not not that, not that's coming out. Yeah, well, yeah, so when we started our design, we we started at the south end because we had that that driveway is, well, there's your your garage is lower than the road. So we were trying to make sure that the water wasn't going directly into that driveway because that was the low point before we started our project as well. So in the profile design, we had put the low point about six feet south of the driveway, trying to get the water passed. Unfortunately, the contractor formed that concrete through the driveway, they didn't put any lip on the driveway itself, so just. All right off, right at the edge, so. So that's why we're going to replace that curb and get that low point. We'll we'll lower it a little bit more on the south side, south end of that driveway to make sure to find this where the water's going. And don't make a close kind of a call and then put a little bit taller lip on the back. Because yes, that was something we were trying to address is we don't want to send all that water in someone's garage, which is certainly not not a good thing to do. As far as the overall pavement width, the overall pavement out there. In the end, it would be slightly more pavement than it was before. So as far as that point of view. Yes, you do get more runoff when you add blacktop, when you add interior surfaces and that's. Was one of the points we had earlier in the project was to not widen streets and 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 build them. But now we're talking about widening, yes. Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Absolutely.
A lot of the water is coming down from the hill. Across Fourth Street into the alley and running along the bike. To me, if you stop that water on Fourth Street and run it off there. Then it'll eliminate a lot of water that's coming around that corner to start. You know, that the valley and Fourth Street that goes into the alley itself. If that stops the water from coming down the hill. And it runs right down the alley and it comes around the corner. And it proceeds off to there. I think if you stop from that water and run it down the curb line like it should be. It was never curved ever before, so it ran right down the alley. Something about stopping the water before it gets.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't coming from the drainage profile that's on here. It would seem it was actually coming, it was coming from the left.
We've got a lot of water coming down on the hill.
Stopping before it gets to Third Street wouldn't be, wouldn't be a effective catch basin.
No, not not fixing their problem though.
But even even today, if that existed, you wouldn't have as much water in front of Eden Mine because of.
I don't know what you have to do if you have to raise the the alley entrance up to make sure it don't run from. Or what, whatever you have to do there, but.
Addressing Fourth Street, so so I think if I'm if I'm looking at the right area, just there's a Mill Street, the levee. Through there. We trend, we have a, at the alley, we put in a high point in the curb just to the north of the alley. So anything that would come from the north. Is not going to make it past that high point and it's going to flow into a catch basin. Just to the north of that alley that's currently in place. Yeah, and so now it's going to get into that gutter line and that's going to carry it to that catch, well, I'm sorry. If it's coming from the west, so it's coming from Mill Street. That's going to continue going south as it did in the past. We couldn't get storm sewer there, we'd had to go underneath Mill Street, which is not a. Not something we want to deal with that channel. Because the storm sewer that's in place right now is north of that channel. Yeah, I mean, as far as where that drainage is going to go, it's going to get caught in the curb. We can bring up the apron on that driveway. Into the alleys to make sure it keeps going south. That will go south, then it'll make its way east down Minnesota and into the ribbon curb, which will take it into the. To the the grassy area on the north side of Minnesota, takes it into the culvert, takes it east or to. East or to the pumping station. So as far as water going from Mill Street, I think with our design, we'll be intercepting that in the curb. And it won't be going along the levee at that location. It will go south down Fourth Street.
Yes, so then based based on that, what? What the, what the piece of the alley I would say now by their place should be much less when that gets. Implemented, basically the drainage for for that area should start by their property. But but yeah, but the drainage should actually now, the drainage profile should start by their property. Or just a little bit off the levee where now that surface water that gives to, gives to Eden Mine because it's actually coming. Some of it's actually coming from the west and and the north and this project should.
It'll intercept it at Fourth Street. We have a, we have a Crown Road at Fourth Street, so. So that should keep it going south. And south and eventually, so the stuff in the west half of Fourth Street will make its way. All the way down to Elm, the stuff on the east side of Fourth Street would go. Well, there was no storm sewer, so there wasn't really a storm sewer designed for. On on a on a typical urban design like this, we designed for either a two-year event or a five-year event.
Okay, so when you have that fifty-year event and the water comes back towards the door to you, are we just going to get out of it?
If you get the fifty-year event, we couldn't have done anything to. A really large event, even a six-inch curb, it's eventually going to go over top. At point three five percent, point three percent, like these flat curbs we have. It doesn't have a lot of velocity, so it ends up getting deeper. Yeah, and so I I think what we would probably want to look at here as far as. You know, e- externally from Third Street, if you're concerned about water coming from other sources. Looking at Fourth Street, at that alley entrance, tipping it up so make sure the water can't go. East nor that, over that curb to make its way over to Third Street. Through the backyards and then cutting through driveways and all that kind of stuff. So there's some opportunity there to kind of raise that boulevard. A little bit and raise the driveway apron, so it's not spilling over. And I think that you're going to see that a lot of that improve just by having that curb line go through the alley, which before it didn't, so. I do think we're going to see a benefit to that. When water, when you get the really large storm events, I mean, it's. You you see water pop up things, places that you wouldn't have seen otherwise. It's kind of hard, it's kind of hard for me to speculate.
We're not, we don't want, we don't want a lot of crap somewhere that hasn't been trapped anymore. But now somebody gets a flood basin or whatever, that never had to worry about it because of. Because it's something we're doing here, maybe giving somebody a major project path or or doing something, you know. I don't think you want everybody leaving here happy and then the first thing you get a major event.
No, I I want everyone to leave here happy, so I'll say that, but as far as how we get there, I think we want to look at, you know, if. Not indiscriminately widen pavement, just for the sake of widen pavement. So I said a ten-foot driving lane, a ten-foot parking area, maybe make it eight feet, which is enough to park. Man, we design roads for eight-foot parking stalls. That still gets the car off the road and provides enough parking for that. So maybe we do eight feet, set ten feet. Maybe right the far end of it, we widen out a little bit more to allow more three-point turns for larger vehicles at the end of it to turn around. So I think that as far as adding pavement, adding additional drainage. Yeah, like I said, I don't, we don't need to just add pavement for the sake of adding pavement, but I think we do need to add some parking as been, as been. Discussed here, so I've identified a hundred and sixty feet of length here. If you don't want to go that full length, you want to just put in a parking to get it to where it used to be, which is basically the last. Couple of lots on the north side. Which were widened out, that's an opportunity, but. Yeah, and and I'm using the term parking there, but it's a dual use. I mean, it's parking and turnaround. If you do it at the far end of the road, it acts as a. Someone get to the end and turn around. I mean, there is an alley there, but I understand in winter that's not always cleared out, so you don't have access to that, so. So, yeah, so I don't want to necessarily count on that, but. But if that parking, the the parking turnaround space is at the end of the road, it'd basically be back to where it was before. I mean, that's. It was wide at the end of the road, it was narrower as you got further south. So that's, that's what I was kind of getting at there, is you could put it back to the previous condition as far as width versus adding. Or we can make it bigger.
I think we should stick with the ten feet. It was tight then.
So there there is the option here, maybe at the far north end of it. Maybe the last twenty feet, you widen out all the way to the fence. I think that property will be developed out in the future, that becomes a driveway at some point. That could be something that could be considered. As well, so if a vehicle getting all the way to the end has a little bit more room to pull in. Than ten feet, maybe give him fifteen feet. It allows turnarounds to be even just a little bit easier. The fire hydrant, yeah, but the fire hydrant would be just just north of what we're talking about there, so.
I guess I'm not just really only concerned about the turnaround on the end. The street was very narrow to begin with. And so I would not want to put it back to where it was. I would want to with, make it wider.
The whole length?
Yes. I mean, it does no good to have a big turnaround on the north end of the block if you can't get to the north end of the block.
Yeah, and and that's with direction, I can certainly assist with that, the. We have twenty-eight feet on Minnesota coming up to that, which I assume there's probably not really much parking at all on that streets. I mean, that's not. As much of an issue. It's also twenty-eight feet on Elm Street. So I, that's, that was why I thought is because of the cars that park in the road make it feel narrower than the cars that, you know, the streets that are twenty-eight feet don't have parking. You can probably get through it's fine because you don't have to worry about vehicles in the way. Third Street? Twenty-five feet of blacktop plus the curb. Minnesota is also twenty-five feet of blacktop plus the curb and then believe Elm is also twenty-eight feet, so. It was, we had built a south. Portion of Fourth Street. Slightly wider than it used to be, which I think we went thirty-four feet on the south block. And then that was just continued for, continue on to the next block, so that's, that's why. That width was was used is that. It was just continuing the same width throughout those two blocks. Versus varying, changing the width on the, from one block to the next. Blacktop on Fourth Street is wider than Third Street. Yeah, it it was just continuing the width that we had in the block on the south end and. I guess, I I I, that that was the only reason I could I could tell you right now is just. It appeared as. We're trying to continue that same width between the two blocks that we were reconstructing, understanding that the street on the north end. Wasn't being touched, so that's why it's an older, older, wider road. It it does feel more dramatic right now because we don't have the pavement in there and. You can't park on that curb. Yeah, it it will feel wider when the, when the blacktop is in. As far as, you know, going back to why the. Why the street was for chosen. You know, we were, when we first ran this, went into this project, we were looking at trying to. Reduce the amount of runoff on projects, so that usually. Ends up with less pavement. We're looking at doing more what we call low-impact type developments. Which is where you. Try to reduce them on a storm water and that was one of our, one of our bigger goals at the beginning of the project was to. Reduce them on storm water in the project areas. Without storm sewer. Well, storm sewer makes less of an issue as far as overall drainage, but. We're looking at not adding a net impervious more on the project than we had before. And some streets did end up wider, especially on the north side of the project. North Third Street and Market are wider than they were, especially Market. Um North Third Street and Market are wider than they were, especially Market. And so we were looking at the project in totality, trying to not increase the amount of pavement, and I understand the people on the south end. Maybe don't care as much about my market, because if you're having issues on parking on there, um. It's, it's getting down to what would be probably the minimum for two sides of parking. Um if somebody is parked on both sides exactly at one spot and someone's coming the opposite direction of you. You might have to wait for someone else to pass through, uh. Yeah, and and I, that may be the case, I think on on uh low volume residential streets. We don't, we don't normally see that as an issue, but I can, you know, I guess the residents may may see it a little bit differently.
I traveled on Fourth Street tonight, I went and checked everything out before the meeting and. There was daycare, pickup, and person home, so. And and we just have a regular sized truck and it was tight going through there.
Sure.
There's, but it it, it's to be a two lane road with. With parking on each side, correct?
Yes.
But it's not.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the state statute for two sided, I know twenty eight feet is the minimum for one side.
I mean, before it goes any further, because it, I mean, it it, it is a one, one car, one way road.
Yeah, I'm sure it feels narrow, but people are parking both sides in same spots, and I can understand that. Um. When, when we were looking at that screen, I understand, I'm not talking about the whole rest of town, but uh. Uh we we try to, try to match into what you have in other areas, and I think as you move further north in town, you get a lot narrower streets, and so. Uh. A thirty foot road, a twenty eight foot road doesn't seem out of the ordinary for the town of Henderson necessarily. These streets are are wider than we have on the north side of town. Um. And they're different types, we added a curb, the north side doesn't have a curb. And so it didn't necessarily seem out of place as a designer for me to have a a wide a street of the width that we have them at.
Wait, did you see the plans and say, yep, that's great, let's go ahead and narrow it some.
Uh you know, ultimately, yeah, when we, when we say go on it, you know, that's what we're doing. Um specifically, the person that we relied on, and I I guess I can only speak for myself, right, you'll have to speak. Um Robin was intimately involved with the design, um is being a civil engineer herself. As a council body, we absolutely relied on her expertise, and she was at every, every planning meeting almost. Uh throughout this entire thing. Um and so we relied on her and her judgment and her expertise that she brought as a council member as a, and as a civil engineer herself, so.
The goal, the goal. Chris can, in, I don't know how some of our council people remember presentations, but we had at least five, six discussions. On how the project was gonna go, I'm discussing, didn't hear an answer, but presentation kind of information on. We're in, last, last summer, last spring at this time, we were looking at storm sewer. Uh modifications to reduce the amount of impervious water that went in various places, I mean. Uh there were numerous needs and there's still a lot of the sort of water conservation for different. Water uh retention kind of things, and. That, that ended up being part of the goal in this project when uh, when, when that committee that was working on this was. Was doing, and that, that's what we dropped to the city council for, for approval and, and any kind of modifications. And that's, that's what did get, that's what did get approved, it just did not honestly come from. S E H saying boom, 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 we want this, this came from the other way, this came from. The city of Henderson needs to look at way to control water and flow and whatever in the community, I mean you must start simple.
The question that I have is. Since S E H defined this and now we're trying to make changes to it, are we gonna impact that problem in what I'm wrong? And we, if we're asking the changes, are we gonna impact what the goal was?
But we want it safe, but we also don't want to affect the goal, so the goal is to have less runoff water.
Hmm, yeah.
You expect it, however, it's gotta be safe, so I know. One of the conversations I had, Trin, he's not only just a turnaround car, right, he's a fire rider, first responded whatever, I drive an ambulance. I'm willing to lay this end of that street if we have both sides built, so. Safety wise, yes, is a concern for me in that aspect. So there's this fine balance of respecting what the goal was, making it safe.
Yeah, so. We live in the spot that if something fails with this. Blood activity or having brain activity, we're gonna get the bronchitis, right?
You're, you are the end of the line.
We're not impacting that as well, right? I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing, if you're right, if that's the case, who are we looking at for extreme amount of stormwater? I mean, what's the trade off?
Yeah, well, I, 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 I think that's exactly, that's the right question. And, and like I said, you know, we relied on Robin to work with S E H on figuring out what the trade off is. And then they also want to make it pretty and consistent with the stuff that they're doing, but um. Yeah, like, you know, you brought it up, the, yeah, with, with the, the runoff where it can just go right into the soils, it's great and everything else, and then, you know. The more we pave, the more water we've got, you know, and so you do less and, and because you guys are absolutely the end of the line. And I know um Robin had brought a soil and conservation agreement here. Um where it's basically tracking that thing all the way up into the farm fields, you know, and what, what does that look like? And, and how do we reduce that, and uh, and that goes with the whole entire flooding conference of effort that we've been doing. Um. But yeah, so like a trade off, right, less pavement, um. So do, do we get to have the convenience of driving part two things and cross our full size trucks at the exact same time? Maybe not. Um how often does that happen? Occasionally, for sure, you know, um but, but again, what's the trade off to that? Um and I know that's kind of, kind of what he's talking about in terms of. Making sure whatever we're doing was a net neutral thing, and knowing that the north end of town had the smaller streets. Um which, the, the, I mean, just as you're feeling a difference and a negative impact as you're driving through it. And I, and I do agree with Chris that there is a perception there in terms of not being able to put the wheels even on the curb, but still smaller. Um it's the exact same opposite on the other side of town where they're like, wow, look at this, why can't you drive on here now? You know, where Ben Park is. Um you know, so all of a sudden, that's infinitely safer with kids running around and school and everything else, so. Um yeah, it's a, it's a stepping on a balloon issue, step here, opposite here and vice versa, so. Um so I appreciate you understanding that and bringing that up, like, yeah, that's, are we screwing this up by having these. These conversations or these changes, you know, whether ten feet, eight feet, you know, how wide or whatever. Yeah, it's, it's a challenge for sure, but that's where it all started in terms of the design, um. It'd be great if Robin were here to, to, to talk to some of that, I mean, Chris can fill us in, but. But yeah, she, she's who, and I can, again, I can only speak for myself, but as a council member, uh and someone who I respect it. And, and as a civil engineer, certainly relied on, on some of her thoughts and expertise on that, so.
So I think the only thing I'm interested in that is that, so it's respectable upon the whole project, that makes sense. But third street got forgotten, that is a dead end, so we're probably the oldest street on the project that's a dead end.
That's, I would, I would a hundred percent agree that that would, that should have been given. It's been more so that, and that's, and that's where I think Fourth Street probably is an issue with the narrowing up. But it is a good street all, all the way through compared to Third Street, you are, you're, you're stuck. And I think, I think that's part of why Chris was more than willing to relook at doing something different now in Third Street. Because that isn't that in, we have taken that turnaround away, which is gonna randomly throw up and get thrown up as a, as a safety issue. And I, and I, and I think it's needed. Somehow, some way, you could, you know, from, even if, not only from a emergency vehicle standpoint, but from a flooding standpoint. Uh it's, it's difficult, if, if we end up with just a narrow, you can't get any of our, any of our flood vehicles or whatever, anything through there. I mean, you don't want to move everybody in the middle of whatever, something like that happens too, so. From, from that standpoint, not only from a, uh, not only from a wider standpoint, but from a civil fence outfit, I think we. We need different things on Third Street than we need on Fourth Street, and. It's, it's a valid statement, you know, uh I, I, I think that's a very valid point, that's a, that Third Street. Needs to be looked at a little bit differently.
So Fourth Street, I think, so it's just gonna be a normal course, it's an empty, it's every last little bar, I don't know. It is frustrating, even though that's, but having it explained as you just did, that there was a purpose. That makes it a whole life insurance swallow, be like, okay, great, we'll suck it up, it'll be done with the fact that that's narrower. But again, I a hundred percent believe the fact that Third Street is an exception to that, will be dead end, and we need to assess the situation.
And I don't think it was forgotten as a dead end, because I think, I believe, I remember bringing up multiple times how difficult it. Already was on the existing width. To turn around and to get in down there.
Let's just get this, let me just plan it, don't consider it, what happened to me, just like, yeah. What was discussed, what was considered, I would look to see how it was used. And now I have to change, I think there was a lot that came out before I could do it. Nobody considered the residents and how it's moving, but I, this is current sidewalk that I didn't know about. Again, you need to, you need to go in to see what's going on, and this is like an America what we've had to use to narrow.
Yeah, I I do apologize about the public involvement portion of this project, when we got started on to um. This project, uh we started off with a report phase that, uh we didn't quite get finished because uh. We had a council meeting that canceled or moved in June, I think it was, or July, and so we ended up going into our design phase fairly late into the summer. Um. Public involvement at that time of year, at that time was very difficult, obviously, we're, we weren't even doing this kind of thing, it just made people in a room. Uh so the public involvement portion was uh, it it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't where it was supposed to be, and on a normal project. Uh we would have done more, and I think we weren't uh necessarily reacting as fast as we should have for trying alternate ways to get that information out to everybody.
Um well, and, and, and to be fair to the process, you're, you're not wrong. Um in terms of, you know, but to be fair to the process, the other issue was we wanted to start it in the fall. Where we ended up coming in over a half, what, almost a half a million dollars cheaper than the estimate because we got bowled so fast.
Yep.
And, and that was part of the consideration as well of an accelerated timeline. Which, you're right, that was an impact, for sure, so, yeah, because it came in like significantly lower than cost, because you could get started right away.
Yeah.
There was communication though at one point, and that I totally agree with you on that sense, but there were, there wasn't enough communication. There was more communication at one point throughout this, I have not gotten anything fishing this spring. Not one email, not one, nothing, saying what's happening with this project.
Yeah, we've just been doing the social media updates.
I found out that I was saying it had a sidewalk removed, never been talked to. I looked out after I moved that market and my sidewalk was gone. I found out that it was not made in here on a Facebook post, which is unacceptable, that's not acceptable. It's not my game, all the names, I do remember, right there, every single day. Getting anything bad down, done, but the issue, like on the street, it had announced that we have, we got through. I mean, this street is a torn absence, I'm joking. At the time, I couldn't even get to my house. And I'm on Monday, actually, because I have a driver's license today, now that's gonna continue even longer than I did this result. It means we can't hire, we can't resolve because. We can't continue not being able to access our households. I mean, I'm extremely much ready with this, with higher levels. I got stuck in the tunnels inner street this winter because the following wasn't dug very well down there, I went through dirt roads, I had a small car. But then my driveway, first off, again, I'm a bit of a driver, yeah, so it would need to be addressed immediately. Like, this is not a weekly model.
At our last council meeting, you, you said you were gonna send out, you had a.
Yes.
A letter to send out.
No.
And it never got sent.
You're correct on that, yeah, we, we did the social media updates and I, I will follow up with uh more information, because I know not everybody is getting their information from that, and I guess. Um I thought that was sufficient, but I'm kind of hearing that's not sufficient, and I do want to make sure we progress and get uh physical letters, well, we've. It's become a kind of industry standard right now is, is going away from mail, by mailing out letters to everybody on a weekly basis. As for the most part, then. It, it doesn't normally work very well on a construction project, because by the time I send out a notice saying this is what we think's gonna happen on Tuesday next week. They get the letter on Wednesday, so it takes five days for the mail to deliver it, and then the contractors' plans have already changed.
Everyone gets their mail either.
So.
Daily, they have to go and get the mail to get.
So, I mean, emails, we can, we can certainly go back to that. Yeah, yeah, and so. Yep, and we've, we've done some, some mail knockers and, or uh some stuff hanging on, on, on doors to try to. Um give a notice, especially things that were immediate that need concern, but uh, but you're right, yes, I did talk about doing that, I didn't uh, I've talked to some people, but I. Will continue with that for the rest of the project here, uh at least going back to the letters we were sending out weekly last year. Um and we have the email, so we, we can go back to that. Uh things are moving a lot faster this spring, once they started doing curb and all that kind of stuff, and. Schedules changed probably twice on the concrete before we even got started, so. I, I know by the time I sent the letter out saying concrete will be there on Monday next week, it's already Monday by the time it gets a letter, and there's no concrete. Next, next update says they're coming a week later, so. Uh but yes, you're, you're correct, and I, I should have sent that note, notice out, and I will, will uh switch gears to getting those, those mail notices out as well. Which will include the email contact lists we have.
With the changes that you're, you've suggested tonight, Chris, um are, have you made contact with the property owners, and are they happy with that?
Uh the property owner two one two oh three, yes, Patrice, yeah. I'm not working off in numbers very well here, so. We've talked.
I have, you know, I'll look for your word that you will be doing something to take care of what we're running, right?
Yes, so my, my intent here tomorrow is after today, tonight's meeting. Any curb we talk about taking out will be marked for removal tomorrow morning. So that's the, that's what I need direction from is, how do we want to proceed? Do we want to add parking stalls on Third Street? Um there's a couple, I mean, I'm, every project I've done, there's like been some amount of repair corrections that we do, because things just. Uh it goes in there, looks fine, we form it up, you take it out, you realize that's not gonna work, so. Okay.
So the conversation, this is why we reached out to you, and I'll say this a couple of times. We reached out to you because as nice as Kevin, or Steve, he doesn't have like concerns.
Sure.
And so a lot of times the response that we get, our plan was, I don't know, let's just follow the plan, because we're just sorry we got to follow this. Or, well, I'll talk to Chris, was the response we would get. And then I would say, and some people are as. Forward as I would be, I'd be like, okay, now have Chris call me. Because it doesn't pay for you to talk to Curtis, and then you, we get, and then it changed. And I was gonna talk to you the other day, and not to, you know, of course, per se, but as we talked the other day, a lot was said, a lot didn't happen. And so there is a poor example of communication.
Sure.
And so, you know, I wrote from the end, it's coming, and it's been told, and it has been said to me, I said, well. Well, that's just how it is, and this is how the plan is written. But you're right.
I understand, yeah.
So, you know, if anyone heard talks and he can't just listen to us and listen to our concerns. Then we wouldn't be having this conversation right now, bro.
Yep.
I want to get back to the storm. Yeah, you're down at this corner, you got a foot cover on the stove.
Thought it could have foot a cover over top of the pipe, yeah. Thought it could have foot of cover over top of the pipe, yeah.
Right. You got a fall off, that's why you got to have that same. So that could, I mean, you can lay a pipe flat. For the north, you have that pipe more covered.
Correct, yes.
But I still don't understand why, I don't know, we have to fall off or at the street. Why are the fence and storm drains put on the street?
So the, the, the two ways to put in storm drains, well, the, the most prominent way is you put in catch basin inlets, the concrete structures with the metal grates, see inside the curb all the time, like we have in the north side of the project. Um, you build those on top of the pipes, we have a minimum structure build height we need to meet in order to actually build those structures. Uh, we've got a structure near the park, which is barely two and a half feet deep and, uh, it required a lot of modification from the contractor to make that work. Um, they made it work, but when you have shallow structures, they tend to deteriorate a lot faster because you just end up with, uh, a, a field fabricated structure versus something that's prefabricated.
Get those boxes, structures, get them any damn play you want.
Yep.
And I've never really forced down to, I don't see how that's gonna be on the, on the literature or even a P G. Do you want to create insurance or do you want to create in there?
Yeah, we have a, uh, an arch pipe in there which requires, uh, at least a five foot manhole um, to, to fit into a five foot round manhole. Uh, we have to have concrete over top of the pipe and we need to have a concrete slab and then we have a seven inch iron on top of it. So just the six inch slab and the seven inch iron is thirteen inches, so that's more than we have to cover. So we couldn't have even gotten a metal grate over top of the pipe, let alone built the structure on it. So that was the reasoning why we had. This is concrete pipe, yeah, we weren't going to use anything less than that without a little covering. So just the, the, i- if I had sent that structure, if I'd sent that build to a, a fabricator, they would tell me I can't build this thing. And I've, I've gotten those, those letters before, when we tried to do shallow stuff, they tell us we can't build it. Has to be field fabricated with masonry block. And then we come back and twenty years later and we have to redo that structure again and probably again and again. Cause those just don't last. So we try to get everything prefabricated, where we get the steel mesh in and all our steel bar in it and all the stuff we need to have in a, in that type of situation. So are there ways to make really shallow structures work, uh, now with conventional build? Um, you can use T's, you can core, core into the side of the pipe and put another pipe into it. You can't get into that in the future if you're ready to repair something, if that line freezes up. You can have more issues with freeze up with shallow lines, um, especially for some reason they got backed up and clogged up and then now you can't get at it. So, um, we typically don't like to build a structure without, you know, at least two feet of cover over top of the pipe, um, foot and a half maybe at the minimum. Um, not saying it has never been done on less than that, but they usually end up being a lot of field fabrication. It just ends up being a long-term maintenance issue. The outlet point is just so shallow on the north side of that alley. There's, I know you were looking at doing a culvert to your driveway, there's not enough room to fit a culvert in there. There's, it's just so shallow and there's really nothing we could do about it. Uh, the only thing that could have happened is if it had been deepened all the way from the levee going towards third street. I'm not sure if the ramifications of doing something like that would be with the armed corps of engineers either, so. Um, it's a definite limitation that, uh, in the end, um, besides intercepting that stormwater further north, wouldn't have changed the volume of stormwater, it would have just changed where we're catching it. So we're, we're trying to just basically conserve the existing drainage patterns. If it was going through the blacktop on the east side before, we put concrete in there instead. Otherwise, the drainage should otherwise basically do the same thing it did for the last, I don't know, eighty years or whatever, however, along that street's been there.
I don't necessarily, I, I understand what Steve is talking about and it's like, I mean, you really analyze and make it do it. But I guess I, when I, when I look at these, these guys, okay, based on what's been brought up, uh, they are, whether you want to believe it or not, everybody wants to believe it. You're here for a long term. Uh, there's, there's gonna be days or more than one day when there are gonna be waters, surface waterage and these guys, as Terry just said, Paul said, they're, they're at the end of the line. So if you did put a storm drain in down on third streets that work during normal operating conditions, I do not really ever seek for a C U situation where, you know, water demand issue, particularly your rain and issue, where it would work anyway, because all of your, that civil stage is, that's coming from the west and from wherever, it's still all gonna end up down there on third street. And I don't think you could ever do a big enough pipe, it's, it's, it's pounded down there. I mean, when you get to the high end, you need money to place, there's water back. Just, it just matter of how fast it gets there. I mean, a storm sewer might slow that down a little bit, but, uh, in, in the end, those guys, they've got a lot of water down there and they're gonna get a lot, whatever, whatever you guess has picked up a little bit, they're gonna get a lot of water down there. Again, I mean, that's just, they're, they're at, they're at that end there. I don't know, uh, I, I, I don't, I don't know if the effort of a storm sewer to take the, the surface water from the north end of the south and the long term is gonna make a difference. People aren't really noticed it, but when you get that twenty five, fifty, your rain and that kind of ability, I mean, it's gonna be, it's gonna be just very cold. It's still there on there.
Yeah, a- a- and, uh, storm sewer, if anything, makes the water get there faster and at a higher rate, which is probably gonna cause more flooding issues. So having it in the gutter lines and having it's, uh, having it allow, the gutter line gives you a storage volume. It gives you somewhere for the water to go. Um, and so our goal, at least on third street, where you're at, is make sure that doesn't go into your garage.
So what we talked about, yes, so we talked about Steve, we weren't quite fully understanding the, 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 our property personally as everything is aware, you know, you're out there. Have more efforts to get that further down the course of the car, because as I said to you, there's a potting area there. We're fully aware of the potting area, we have to abide by the rules of not building the potting area. We can't do this, we can't do that, because there's a potting area, it's there for potting, right? We didn't want the park last night. But what we didn't want to do is have you down, create this lovely, beautiful curving system that's going to flood my yard and not make it to the potting area.
Yep.
So not only am I concerned about my driveway, I want it further past my yard to get closer to the potting area and the drain down into the potting area, down to the cover and down where it's supposed to go. Not just get everybody's water to go down the curb and it looks like it's about the same.
So you want it on your curb and wash out there, or something, yeah?
Yes, yes, yes. So I want it, I want it to be more dable, the water in that curb, so that it gets past my yard and then drops into it as opposed to flats that is just.
You can have your curb on. He may, he has a curb on.
He's not, he's, he'll do it right now, it's black.
Right now, I have a street that I can't park on.
I know.
I have, I have. I have a street.
But you're not gonna have that for a while, yeah?
Well, I hope, if you want to buy a curb though, that would be a period.
Well, we kind of talked about that.
What is?
We have asked him about that, but apparently it's my understanding for, 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 in more directions, as I said. Um, that isn't necessarily the, the way that it currently is, is in your work defense, it actually goes up. So but faster than most, it goes down and then it goes up. Water doesn't flow off. So we already know the water's gonna go down into our yard. We're content with that, it's fine, it's not the end of the world, we're not trying to be difficult, but at least get it past our, our beginning of our.
Yeah, that's, that's the goal, we'll work on that, I'll be out there tomorrow morning if you wanna go through that directly.
Okay, that's good.
The bottom line for us is the normal rain event, I, I'm not even talking about twenty five, this is your, 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 your normal rain event. Currently, and in the past, it has always stopped at our driveway, it's run down our driveway. We would just like to address that and try to stop that now. And get it past our driveway, it's time, I understand it's gotta go in our yard because of how it's, it's.
But that's.
Fast going to our yard. I just want to make sure that it's a normal rain event, that's what's happening.
Hey, go.
I get, if we have a six inch drain, we, we built our garage, we were in the home, I knew that when we built the garage, right, I was worried about it, but that's just what happened, right? So I understand that for fifty years, twenty five years, thirty minutes, it's just a normal rain event that, like, has tried to stop the water going into our garage.
Well, because when they began the street in front of our house, between your house and my house, they took out that patch, they must have repaired like sewer or something at one time. There was, when they repatched it, they had like a dip right there. So the water went all the way down third street, it didn't, it didn't, it didn't, it didn't, my driveway.
Even the west side was coming.
Yes, we were getting the sump pump from Lori and Bruce's house coming out of our house, so. Even though we took it out to the basement, we were getting all the sump water out of our house. We had a lot of water within my base. So seeing the street projects, trying to find some positives, seeing the street projects. The fact that Adrian Crowe, you share the water road from side to side, that's fantastic. My only request, and we're not asking for, you know, the world, is get it past my driveway, get it a little past my property and get it closer to that lovely gray state that says the bottom of it.
Sure. Yeah.
So.
Or something.
There wasn't before, the neighbors, so that was a bathroom that we had like two away and they were, had property people in there. They would go and their sump pump would run continuously, there's so much groundwater down there in general. So they would take their little sump pump hose and they, you know, walk out to third street, they dump it into the street. And so the water from that sump pump would run right down the street, it's a little gully in our street and down into our garage. So I would kindly go up there and say, Katie, please not put your sump pump out in the street. Put it in the yard, it's there to, you know, garden or whatever, put it in the yard, so it didn't spill, whatever. No, they wouldn't do that, so it was a bathroom, it's me and you, cause I'd walk over when they were home and I'd take the sump pump on the street, then put it back in their yard and then they come home from work and ten o'clock at night and they'd see it, they'd grab it, decided that in the street. And it would be about a quarter, I'd say, of, sure, you have a thermal valve on us, but we even come to my property. And I'd be like, well, first of all, I don't think it's legal, at least I know, I'm sure, I'm sure it's not legal, it's just some water in the street. That's a good, right there, so.
Sure, tile wasn't understanding that there was gonna be down, but I didn't use.
A- again, with, with, with tile, we need storm sewer, so we have to be able to hook that tile into something. Um, and so. It'd be really shallow, I'm not saying it's not possible to do. Uh, when we put the drain tile in there, the drain tile, it's, it's a primary function. Well, the, the primary function of the drain tile is to drain the subgrade of the road. It's, it's, the drain tile is a roadway related item, we have it below our sand section where we have storm sewer.
Right, right.
Right.
Might start from this council. That made it clear that when I have sump pumps running all up the streets.
I was told that too, just recently, there were some baskets or something, so.
Yeah, and the sump baskets are where there's drain tiles.
Be a dialogue or a line that I'm on the streets or some, I'm supposed to be, it's not running all up the streets.
Okay.
Is this in our, are in the curb in nine streets? I put nine in that curb in nine streets.
Well. Yeah, so the drain tile we have is primarily just on the north side of the project, that's the later, had storm sewer. Um, so ye- yes, a- as far as the sump baskets, we have them in where there's drain tile, but we can't put a sump basket in without drain tile. So is there a workaround to trench in a drain tile behind the curb? I'm sure something could be done, it, but, uh, that was not in the original project.
So the president's about you, not know a lot of what's, yes, mayor, but they're taking from the east.
I, I generally, and, and it kind of goes back to the same discussion as far as drainage in town is we like to have more, the same idea of pumping groundwater onto a pavement or into a pipe. It's prefer to have more impervious area, grass areas, to put that water. I'd rather have a, a sump pump going into a garden, um, or going into a backyard.
Something in, you're saying on the east side of third street, if people have got sump pumps, when the city should be endorsing or doing whatever, it's telling people to go, it's run their sump water to eat.
That'd be the recommendation, yeah. If, if you wanted to put in a pipe behind the curb, uh, I mean, there's probably something that could be worked out, but my recommendation.
Where they go and if we don't run it up to that, to that sump.
We'd have to run a, probably a four inch plastic pipe, maybe at least six inches below the ground. Um, and take it from the north end to the south end. Uh, and we core into the culvert, so they take a four inch core saw, core hole, and just, uh, drill into the side of the pipe, into the side of the culvert we installed. Uh, that's one way to do it, or the other way to do it is you put a little elbow on it and then drain it into the open area. We have one of those installed at the, uh, filtration basin that is on the south side of the baseball field because there's drain tile on that road and we couldn't get it underneath that storm sewer, so we just deflected it and ran that drain tile into that basin, so, uh, we did.
So if you want, if you want to do that, they don't decide that right now, do?
If you want the contractor to install a pipe and all that stuff, we, we need to do it now.
Lori and Bruce, they're, they're, their sump pump runs continuous, comes, um, come rain season.
My issue is I don't like that water running down the streets also, because it's actually, that's, nothing.
Yeah, no, I agree, yeah, sump pumps are.
Okay, so what, what should they do on the west side?
They'd be doing essentially the same thing, just dumping it in.
Do you put a, do you put a, do you put, do boxes on the west side?
Boxes and a four inch pipe behind the curb.
So I, I have a feeling with this sump. That was like forty years ago, a long time ago, it was all the way to the best, yeah.
That's, that's what I, that's what I would say, yeah.
Yeah, but I've done for years, there are problems, so what's this?
So, wha- what a sump basket is, and they, they haven't installed any, yeah, cause they don't do it until they do the final grading. It's a, a plastic box, it's seven inches by eleven inches, so it's rectangular. Uh, it's about nine inch, it's eleven inches deep, it's deep. And a sump pump line can be either draped on top of it, it's got a, a plastic grate, so you can have a sump pump line go on top of it and from that little basket has a pipe that goes out into the drain tiles in the street. Uh, the other thing that can be done is they have a hole on the side, so if you have your sump line entrenched, you can go into it underground. And so we do those very commonly on, you know, permanent area street projects I work on, we do those because we have drain tile. We don't have drain tile here because there's no storm sewer in most, in most of the town, so that's why they weren't, if, put in with the plan. We usually consider the sump pump connections to be a, I'm, I'm gonna say they use the word bonus, maybe it's not the right word, but it's, it's an extra opportunity to take those sump pumps into that drain pipe because we already have it behind the curb, so. To add a, a line just for sump pumps, I guess I've never done that before, but it can be done, if that's the question.
So I, 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 I want to do that, if you want to run more down the streets, if I can see that, I think there's gonna. Go down there with a very hard, but, um, it's like a river running all down, it's not pretty down there at all. There, is there. Why do you turn that here? Here's my concern with putting a pipe in. And potentially trenching some. Um. Those. To a box. Is, they will freeze. We get water, we get groundwater, and then there's some, so some pumps run.
Oh.
Well, that's why you're trying to. They will freeze, so somebody will forget, and they will freeze, and then they will have water. But we, we don't have a basement, so I'm not really, but. A lot of, a lot of people just don't think about their sump pump. Yeah. In November or just summer. And we might get some rain, some groundwater. And then the pipe freezes, and we'll just have a bigger problem with, from the pipe under the asphalt or other, uh, on the backside, or a big. But that, that would be my opinion, if we don't have some, I mean, for all your halls on your side.
That's what they're doing now.
Yeah, I wonder, why the sump pump, the rest of the stuff, I have a long post, I get yard system that I cut off now, but that messes up my backyard, it shouldn't be going into the street anyway. Maybe you should, uh, talk to the owners, that's the people who live in the other house, that would realize that you're not, that's what they need to see.
But, but I mean, but then you got exactly the opposite, right, I mean, you, you got your sump pump in, and it is running the street. So, and if you plan on, you plan on keep doing it that way, correct, if you don't.
Yeah. Our one is nonstop, but during spring and so the ground, it's early. Are they my one, my sump pump runs? Here's the, I'm so, I'm always running, if, I'm always the first one that has to start, I'm the last one to finish, but I just have a plan, we're behind you. Yeah, and she does. I know, I have a number of.
So what's the solution on those, those people on there on the, on the, on the west side?
Well, good, yeah, and that's a good point as far as freezing, if you put in a pipe and it's too shallow, uh, you know, four inch plastic line, foot deep, it's. It's gonna freeze, if someone has a trickle of a. If someone has a sump pump running in the winter. If it makes it to that pipe at all, it will eventually fill up and freeze over winter, and then come spring, when you need that pipe to be opened up. It will be frozen until the ground thaws enough to to let that through, so. Um. You know, that point's brought up, it probably makes less sense to put in the drain tile behind the curb. When we put in drain tile, the curb, the drain tile we put in the project is usually about three to three and a half or four feet deep, depending on how. Deep the road section was, so it's much lower, um, than what we're talking about here today. Um, and it's less susceptible to freezing, so it also has, um. Uh, it's also perforated, so the, anything the water can exfiltrate, make its way out, if it had to, normally doesn't happen, but, um. Yeah, I mean, I I'd had to look at each property separately to give a recommendation, I, I normally like to get the water into a grassy area, but if it's not a. Sandy soil, and it's just sitting there after it drains out, then, um.
But when you.
Yes. Yeah, salt's killing everything off, and we don't want salt in the Minnesota River either, so that's, that's. Yeah.
Okay, so the river that you put in, that accommodates the sump, the water coming in and there's some, take it down to the culvert?
Yes. Yeah, the the curb, sorry, the.
They just have a river, they're gonna.
It's gonna spill off the roadway, there's a ribbon curb, it's gonna do, I mean, the areas we did ribbon curb. The areas we did ribbon curb were def- were primarily areas that the road was higher than the surrounding ground, so we needed, uh. So we had that water just kinda run off like it used to. Um, but yeah, will the sump pumps that are right now in the curb line eventually make its way down there, yes they will, but, uh.
But it won't stay within that ribbon curb.
Once it's the rib, anything hits that ribbon curb, it's running off into the grass behind it, there's nothing to hold it back, so.
It's not like we're asking them to do ours, should it cover it, it's just basically.
Yeah, it's it's just like, it's 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 a concrete shoulder, I mean, it's. It's just an edge, um. It it used to be blacktop, now it's concrete, but it still primarily functions the same way. As the blacktop roadway would have before, it just goes off the edge. So the 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 concrete ribbon in those situations just kinda holds the road together and gives you defined edge road, is primarily this function.
Do you specifically live at their property?
As far as sump pumps, straight, no, I haven't.
So maybe it's possible to sit down, okay.
Sure.
If you're the reason, right, and you'll one size fits all, it would sound like.
Yeah, if we needed to sell.
Pretty sure what he's saying is, you know. They're way near many jobs, maybe forty years.
Yeah, so I'll be in tomorrow morning to review all the hurdles I can take a look at.
So what do you need? What do we need to do tonight?
Well.
Do we need to approve that ten foot thing?
Well, so he, so he has come back with a proposal, and so our job tonight would be to respond to that proposal. With, you know, and that, you know, give him changes. Or, you know, whether it be ten foot or eight foot or whatever, or, um. Yeah, our job tonight is to respond to his proposal. Yeah, I guess.
Well, I like the ten foot proposal, um.
I I think, uh, on my end of things, I I can pay for the the curb we're taking out. Um, I think that'd be my concession here to, to show that I do wanna, uh. Show that we could have done something a little better here, and I don't want the city to be paying for this twice because we didn't have that communication earlier, so. Uh, I'd be willing to pay for that, that concrete we're taking out, putting back in. Um, we'll pay for it under the contract because your contract is with the person doing installation, but, um, we will, we'll take care of that cost.
So the additional cost to the city would be the ten foot.
Correct.
Gas bill.
Yes.
Do you want the.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, no, no, don't worry, we saved a a boatload on on getting started in the fall anyway, that will be all right, so. Um, but yeah, no, that, that's, yeah, you're right. So.
So my question regarding whether eight foot, ten foot, um, we still maintain our, we're not gonna lose any property. Correct.
What do you, what do you mean?
Well, as far as our lot size, our property, we're not losing it.
Oh, no. She's not saying if he comes.
We should, I'm saying we're not granting easement for the roadway and then the other ones, who's, who's maintaining that structure? Is that gonna be part, is the city gonna plow that part, are we gonna maintain it like we were? Because we kinda maintained it from that grass line, not because.
We did, like.
Like, yeah.
We have very good neighbors in that.
Let's allow me to give him a beer, but let's.
And we all kind of take care of each other, so I don't want something that's gonna back down.
I just wanna make sure that's, uh, yeah, nothing, that's what I'm saying. We don't need to rent easement for a certain amount of our property, or.
No, I don't believe so.
Everything, everything in here is alright.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to say.
And to maintain it. We're gonna maintain it, snow removal, or the city will, or all that.
Steve Barbour.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did, I I I, I don't know, you'll have to wait till the first plow, I guess, see what happens. Probably depends on who's plowing, you know?
That's what I wanted to get at, so.
It never what lady did, and I understand that, that if they cut up the line, then I get it. But. That's gonna be.
A little bit of that road frontage goes back to when the lobby was put in. Um, it's okay, about five feet, change some, road running in front of her almost.
Yeah.
Just a lot of little, uh. But that's what I just wanna make sure, we're not, it's not for easements, we're not having to.
No, I didn't see that, I know we we talked about this in the past, so I guess maybe the question I have is. We've, we've talked about ten foot width is what you're 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 asking for, as we show in the drawing. The full length. Going from that last driveway, not the last driveway, but as shown in the drawing, or do you wanna go, I think that's.
The tree for us.
Uh, this driveway, I mean.
I think we wanna go the full length, I, my suggestion would be the full length.
And that's okay.
Full length, period.
So.
I don't know if he has clarified.
Yeah. West side only.
That was his proposal from your driveway all the way to the left.
Yeah, so we.
Are you, now, land is staying a whole, like. Do you use your tree? No.
From the tree. That.
About a foot, yeah, it only lives about three feet of that section. Looks like ten feet, ten feet, a little bit, like we heard.
Your initial recommendation was the full length?
I was showing you, uh, the full length from Minnesota, no, but.
No, 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 no.
There from.
From two oh, two oh seven to the north.
Three.
Two.
Two oh three.
Two oh three, I think, wasn't it?
Okay, two oh three to the north.
Yes, yeah, so that's, that's what I'm showing, I'm showing what I'll call the maximum. Um, and then you can always reduce that down. Uh, as a turnaround, you don't need all that, but for parking. More you have, more you have, so.
Well, I would make that a motion.
But there will be no curb up from two oh three until the end of Marissa's driveway then.
There there's still curb, but it'll be a driveway curb, so.
That's what I'm talking, that's what I'm questioning now.
Yeah, no. I I thought the same thing when I saw it, and I think our inspector was watching the other concrete guys, and then they just did that, yeah, no, that's coming out.
It's gonna run the whole line from Minnesota, I'll be.
No.
No.
It's gonna run the corner of Minnesota to Marissa's, but I'm just making, there is that little decorative, huh? That's.
The far north end, uh, the last driveway goes back up the high back, and we'll take that out, too.
I'm just, yeah, clarifying that Marissa's driveway and two oh three's driveway will all be just one like it was all the way.
Well, hundred and sixty feet of driveway curb cut, we'll leave the sections in that we can. Uh, that are driveway now, and we'll patch in between them. We, anywhere there's a driveway, I propose to do is concrete, as far back as we can, just to differentiate, if you park here, this is a driveway, not just the parking pad. Um, there are a couple of those driveways that are, they are blacktop, one of them may be blacktop now, so. Oh, for the alley?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd put concrete, five foot concrete apron on that. Oh, yeah, we we we'd always planned to do a five foot concrete apron anywhere there's a driveway curb cut.
So anywhere that's gonna get ripped out will be marked tomorrow night?
Yeah, I'm I'm coming in tomorrow morning with my inspector, and we're gonna review all this and talk about.
So if anybody has a dispute, they should call you Tuesday morning or whatever.
Right now, they got some ready marks, and I just thought we'd insert it to meet, but I saw they had stuff marked with three feet feet. On the west side, and they didn't have anything marked on my side, but.
No, that's, yeah, I know it'll be back tomorrow morning after our conversation, so we'll, we'll get taken care of.
Okay, just make sure that you're all communicating on the same page, because I think that is kind of part of the ticket, is that. The issue doesn't exactly on the same page.
And I had, I believe it's all being taken care, Monday we're expecting to see concrete, it's back here now, so.
Question, uh, question in the motion would be. If you just, what, on on the plan you got submitted, if, uh, if any motion is just to accept this, what would be the exception? I figured out how to write this up, for. What would not, from where you started, where we're at right now. What's not gonna be like you sold on as long as you submit?
My understanding, I mean, what we were talking about with her property is just some, this really construction issue, that's, no, doesn't need, doesn't need counsel. So what you're, what you're considering here today, I guess, is, do you wanna accept this drawing as shown? And proceed with. As we proceed with it as proposed, uh, exit number one.
As shown is the tenth, tenth east hallway, is that what you're saying?
Correct, yeah, or you use the address numbers if you wanted to, driveway at two oh three.
Well, if that's the way it's shown.
Yep.
Then I don't, then I don't see to get it to a whole lot of detail, because then when I write it up. More screwed up.
Yeah, no, they'll make it more difficult.
This is the way it's gonna be, and we're, and you're accepting this.
Yeah.
Then I think that's what you wanna do.
That's my motion.
Yeah.
The street, it's.
And it's gonna be by.
Because it's lower now, and I can't visualize what your. Um. Slope is gonna be, or I wanna make sure that my car does not, right, and it's not on my pulling my driveway.
Sure, and you're on the.
I'm four inches off the ground.
Okay.
So. It didn't before.
Sure.
And I don't want to count, so I don't know what that's gonna look like, but it's dropped by the way, it's still, I have to go down. In a dip, and then get on on driveway.
I understand, yeah, um, I mean, if we wanna visualize, what sometimes we'll do is we'll run a string line from the match point to the curb, we can show you what that slope looks like. Compared to what it was before, that's something we've done before, if that helps. Um, but. Sure, sure. That that's up to you, my inspector will probably be there around eight o'clock, um, I'll probably come in around nine or ten, if there's a cer- if someone wants me to be here a certain time, I can try to make that arrangement. Otherwise, um. Just generally in the morning, I guess, was was planned to be here. A a couple hours, yeah, enough to get everything marked up and, uh, go through the changes, my inspector, and, um. And, yeah, a- a- as long as, as long as I need to be here. That's probably fair to say, nine to nine to eleven.
If we make sure that we witness what you're doing by that time, and we can trust you with that.
Sure. Yep, I'll be in the, yep, yep, I'll be in the project area, I'll go to Third Street, probably, I always walk the job every week. Uh, to look for things, and so I'll be doing that as well.
The street is gonna be just as narrow. Right now. Under the, Michael's house, it's still gonna be that hill arrow.
But there's gonna be that additional bitumen, bitumen for parking.
No, that is, that's down, so when you cut the. Two oh eight, two oh five, or two oh five, it's still gonna be just as narrow as it is right now, so there's two vehicles parked. On each side, is the MS at my side or your house?
That is a full curb.
It will not be.
Yeah, it's not on the side.
But it won't be.
Just plan to take that out of there.
Not on DM's side, there'll be just the drive over, just a cement piece.
So the the proposal I have in front of you is to add, is to re- re- take out the high back curb on the west side of the street. For the last three lots or so. Um. Wherever we show it there.
No, it would be from two oh one.
Two oh one and two oh three.
And two oh five.
So that would all be drive over curb, which allows you to get onto that blacktop. Between the next, between that drive, further south driveway, two oh three, and the next driveway. Uh, would still be the high back curb as it is right now. Without the blacktop catching. Uh, that's about forty feet or so. So, am I, is that, is that what you guys are interpreting for me here?
You, you want.
Now, it has three lots, so we're coming from the part of the south that he's only talking about now, so there's still.
Right, but the curb is gonna be from your driveway to Al's tar.
Right, and I've still got curb right from my house, and there's curb right across the street.
And you're fine with that?
So it's still, it's, no, yeah, I feel like it's too narrow, it's too narrow.
Just the whole, yeah, the whole curb from two oh one all the way to the dike.
And the whole west side over the curb, we don't have any. So. If you drive over her, like her west side, would high back be there on the west side?
I mean, yeah, it can be, I guess. Well, you know, the west side has a lot more driveways, so it already has a lot of low areas, um, in those areas, it slopes back up. Um, once you pass that last driveway, I think slopes down towards the grass, so. There's probably only gonna be a smaller amount for you, just between the two driveways, trying to look at my drawings here, so.
So I think what I'm hearing is, is we're gonna have no high up there on the west side. But there's still gonna have that narrow street. Right, but if you at least park up on the concrete.
You won't have a curb barrier, just like before, where you can.
If it was just the, once they poured the asphalt, you could park up on that concrete, so it would actually widen enough. For parking spaces per se, this, this section right on. Like, because your house is on my side. On my back, yes, so you're losing part of it, you know, the east side, you have to change any of the high back curb, but you would gain. On your side, so like. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna prefer not parking in the grass. So it's still not really needing to be, you know, so. Just based on where it's just older, okay.
I mean, you know what they're giving you?
Give you a, it's.
No, I mean. We're giving that to the last two pieces of street, did, you, you know what they're trying to. I don't, I don't know what to say as far as actually drawing is on here, I mean, you're, it's gonna have to be something that. You're grasping, I mean, we're on the same page here to accomplish what they want to accomplish.
Yes, so, uh. So what we had proposed was, I mean, it's gonna go to some of the historical stuff and why we did what we did a little bit here, but. Um, from two oh seven to the south, that's where the road, um, had been about twenty six to twenty seven feet, and it widened out to at. Um, from two oh seven to the south, that's where the road, um, had been about twenty-six to twenty-seven feet, and it e- widened out to at most about thirty feet. Um, north for the next two houses up to, um, up to where the curb started, and, uh. Uh, that's where it widened out to about that thirty-eight, forty feet, which is what we're kind of proposing in our plan right now, so, um, there's about forty feet in between, uh, where. Yeah, maybe about fifty feet here in total where we're narrowing it from where it used to be, right in the middle of the block, I think that's kind of the area we're talking about right now, so, um. So our proposal right now is to add the parking. Slash turnaround area on the west side only from the, um, parking, the, the. I'm using, get the right numbers here, but the driveway between two oh five and two oh three, I think there's multiple driveways out there for most houses, so, um. If it's being asked to be widened south of that, that's not what's shown in the drawing.
So what would be the difference if a wash left and was all drive over curb all the way from, from, uh, two oh seven to two oh one?
Well, if we wanted to continue that, the two minutes patch would be the option to have there between the, uh, in front of two oh five as well. Yeah, the whole thing could be drive over curb, a- again, the only thing that's getting you is ability to drive up on the grass. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, I mean, those, those stakes we have out there are. That, that wasn't the discussion here, that's not what we're showing here, um.
That's why.
So are you asking to replace all the curb on the west side, that's the question for me, from a twenty-eight foot road to, uh. Whatever, I guess, would be the, the question, um, it was twenty-seven feet on the south third of the block before we got into the project. And it's twenty-nine to thirty feet in the middle third, and then it was forty feet in the north end.
So the, the main, from what I understand, being down there tonight right before the meeting, from what I gather is, so, there's, um. Wooden posts with pink tops behind the curb into the lawns about a, a foot or, or more. And then, so that's where the curb, the residence field was, and then there's the foot where the curb is now, that wasn't supposed to be a curb, it was supposed to be a drive over. So why the foot, and, and it's on either side of the road, or, or a foot and a half, or I, I didn't measure it, so. So why from this, the, the property, uh, post, is there that gap from the curb versus having the curb where, where the mark is?
So the, the lat there set out there are set at four foot offsets, so that the contractor can build the road without disturbing those lats, so the lats have a hub in front of them. And those have an elevation tied to them, so each time we put in a lat, we put in the cut in the fillings, that top of curb is gonna be X. Point feet, uh, above that hub, so when they set it, that thing through there, uh, they know exactly what elevation it's gotta be set at, so. We, those lat are typically set four feet, the hubs are set four feet behind the back of curb, the lat is slightly more than that, so, um. The distance behind that curb, which is cleared out, is just enough room for the contractor to get their equipment through, they have a slip four machine, that's usually a foot, foot and a half behind. The curb in order to fit that, that's, that machine through there, so.
But that's where they lost the space on the road.
Well, where the lat was, it, it's kind of a, it's just all relative, so I mean, the, the lat could have been set three feet, could have been set two feet, so those don't mean anything as far as, um. As far as, you know, where the old road was or where the road should be, I mean, the road is, uh, if we designed a thirty foot road, it'd just been, those lats would have been pushed out a foot on each.
But even the workspace from, you know, behind the curb, that's where the road actually was, and then the curb is like a foot or whatever.
Yeah, and where the road was and where it is today, I mean.
That's from back, back of curb to back curb?
You went narrow this street because as Randy said, it was always a concern, and now it's narrow by three feet. The issue we have is, it was a concern to get the vehicle before, now it's become a less accessible, why is that street narrow in East D.C.?
So then what, what if you, if you leave the east side so long, and you use that as your management point, you go thirty, you go thirty-three feet from the back of that curb. To the back of the curb on, or wherever, I don't know what you're gonna call the curb, whether it's a drive over or whatever it's gonna be, but if you take that back thirty-three feet. What's, what would, what would? So there's thirty-three feet, you like? Yes, right.
They're just asking for a little bit, they want a back foot, they have, it was never too, uh, legal, too vague.
So, but, so why, what do you, what do you need to want, thirty-one or thirty, or, what's, what's enough?
So right now it's twenty-five at DM's.
Twenty-eight.
Right now it's twenty-five from.
No, it's twenty-eight feet, you're just.
Twenty-eight including the curb, twenty-five about that, so between the two curbs that are currently laying there, it's twenty-five feet. Unless it's too narrow, and it was an issue prior, as you're gonna tell you, it's exacerbated, you need to find a narrower.
So, so, so I guess what I need today is, is direction, is twenty-eight feet, uh, not what you want, so you, you want wider than twenty feet, what number do you want, twenty feet's the minimum.
I guess, that's the numbers that we're mixing up for many, right now you're saying what's there is twenty-eight feet.
Correct.
They're saying it's twenty-five and a half, twenty-six and a half feet, whatever, you're saying it's twenty-eight, they're saying twenty-eight is enough, so, doesn't really make any difference. What if it's twenty-five right now, it's twenty-eight or. Right, but, but if you want two more feet, then it's thirty, right?
Correct.
Three more feet, it's thirty-one, and if you say that's twenty-six, then that's twenty-one. Yeah, it's two feet, yeah, it's all, it's all irrelevant, it's kind of the one foot, two feet, three.
How much more space can we be? That's a simple question.
So thirty-one feet.
Okay.
Three feet of driving space.
So what, what I'll need to do is, um, I designed by cross section, so I'll look at leaving the east curb in. Moving the west curb in, west curb out three feet, uh, and see how everything fits in there, so, the concern I have immediately is going to be. If I move, yeah, we've, we've got two things going on there, we have driveways that go down like this, we have a road that goes on like this, if I keep moving that, that way, those driveways have to come down and get steeper. Um, if I, uh, raise that curb to make up for it, now all that water from the west side's going to the east side, which is what we're trying to prevent happening, so, um. So, there, there's always a balance here, and, you know.
So that thirty-one feet, we're talking about in your driveway, is it a compromise?
It does, and, and even on this, and, and, and going to the. So going into the original design, uh, on the south side, we are widening the road from where it was before, so the, the more widening we have, the more elevation issues we run into, so. Um, the driveways are there, were built to match to a twenty-seven foot road at that time, um, so it's, there is a balance here that I need to, to meet, where. I mean, conceptually, a forty foot road would look great out there, but I know it won't fit, uh, thirty-one foot road, um, might fit, I, I don't know, uh, it was. It's like twenty-nine to thirty feet down the middle, um, and I gotta see what the ramifications are of widening everything. Eight inches, yeah, so you could drive, you could park on top of that, and. Twenty, yeah. You know, I'll, I'll throw out an option there that's could be considered too.
They're gonna need to go down there.
The, the option could be to, to just, uh, uh, do a four foot wide concrete walk behind the curb, and then you could at least park on that walk. So instead of taking all that curb out and pushing the road up, we can put in a walk, we can slope it the same, same way, and people could park up on the sidewalk, I mean, that's.
So kind of the way I'm getting it is though the driveways on the west side of that street, we wouldn't have the. Grade issue if the road grade to begin with wouldn't have been lowered. And you lowered it.
On the south end where those driveways are, uh, it probably didn't get lowered that much, the far north end at the levee. It looks like it lowered a lot, just because the west side is a lot higher, so you see that old bit of blacktop that was left in there, it looks really dramatic, if you go over the east side, it's a lot closer to where it was before.
The two oh three driveway is pretty dramatic.
Okay.
I mean, it, it's. Pretty dramatic.
Yeah, and that's.
So that's a huge drop in the road.
Yep.
So I think our biggest concern with, yeah, this is what I'm hearing, the biggest concern is making sure that. Jamie in the building also talking two oh seven, or two oh five, two oh five, two oh seven, six, in that area there, it needs to be wider because of the number of drivers that they have. Because it is gonna be wider very end, so my question is, did two oh seven, so let's just go with, or actually go to a black, with DM's property there. Do you know, is that road currently, where that you have it set up to pay, is it lower than it was, or is it pretty much the same height where it was at that point in the road?
Where the driveways are located.
So the other rate shorter is, is lower on the north side.
Yes.
But. Is it lower in front of DM's driveway as well, if you have the answer?
Yeah, so I'm looking at. Yeah, I, I, I don't have a land history right now, but, uh.
We're kind of in a standstill because.
Well.
No one has the answers, and. You know, you have to go down there and measure it and check the fall, and you gotta see it to.
Right, we have to see what's gonna work, because that's the thing is that, hearing what you're saying, and if I'm hearing you correctly, that long time, time stations get the road wider. If, if getting the road wider is what the end result needs to be, how are you going to get that to happen safely? And most appropriately to accommodate the driveway center of these things there.
Well, I mean, if that's, if that's, I, I think the way that you can handle it, if everybody, I think everybody agrees something can be done, we don't know, we, I don't think the motion would sound, sound like we can ask. Right now to get it, I, I think you two guys initiate the process by having the hearing, the property owners know what's going on, or by having, by having a meeting, that. The rest of the council gives those two guys discussion, work with the property owner, say go ahead, because I don't, I don't think you wanna have a special meeting every three days, just.
Well, we're not paying for it either, so the, the city's not putting the.
Oh, yeah, we are, I can tell you that right now, and, and, and I, and I don't mean to, to defend him, but that's exactly where it's gonna, absolutely, we're gonna end up paying something.
Right.
There's no question. But he, Chris can't tell us tonight if a thirty-one foot road will even work.
He will, he, they will, they will tell us a lot by, by meeting, if they're out here in the morning, doing whatever, but I don't think you wanna have a special meeting every.
No, I don't.
Yeah, so I, I think they've got, they've got to give you two guys a discussion to meet with Chris and the property owners, and if, if, if you guys don't feel that there's, uh. That, that this is a technical solution, I mean, I see your point, why you want to throw, that was the key wall that's part of their problem, so.
And never was an issue. I didn't have, you know, not proper. I'm not perfect, I didn't have the water running to my side. So it's in the curb.
Right, you're, you're on the high end.
Now that they lowered it.
Move the road west. You're gonna steep this, and drive away there, reverse.
Yes.
When you raise your grade, the overall, the original.
If we raise the road, uh, elevation, we'll have problems on the east driveways. Yeah, so the, the road previously sloped across, we put in a crown, um, so. Once I get held a little closer to where it was, I just like come down a little bit from where it was, um. Should be twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight. We put in a river, a river, a river, the whole way on the west side.
The, the other thing we can do is, um, you know, we're talking about conventional curb types, we could have put in a D curb. Uh, which, uh, has a little more pronounced backsides, four inches tall in the back, uh, twelve inch, um, side, it's a little harder to park on, but. Um, that would be something that would be mountable to get into a driveway, but you'll feel that when you get into the driveway, and it's, it's, uh, it's a little more jarring than what, what we have out there now, so, um. The road was at one point thirty feet or less, or three quarters of the. Or three quarters of the block. Um so I feel more confident that thirty feet would fit. Uh the contractor built, you know, it's, we're talking about curb, we we're not gonna build curb on Blockter, so. If we need to move curb three feet. They gotta come along and trench that whole entire way and put it in sand and put in gravel, so. And all full subgrade work, it's not just bring the curb machine and set it two feet over where it used to be, so. Um. If it's on top of gravel, it's gonna be okay, but if it's on top of the boulevard materials, it's probably not gonna be as good soil, so. We could look at what can we do based on the road base that's been built out there so far, that's one thing we could do. Um. Where we aren't having to. Not just bring in a curb machine, but bring in a backhoe and. Extend how long that road's closed and all that stuff even longer. Um.
But with the property on the west side, you're high enough over there where you go with the gravity of the curb. So property, so it's gonna be blocked out. But if it's not slow off that, it's not a sudden, it's gonna stay on that west side. And run down. Make sure, unless you have. Five minutes. I can see you're thirty feet. So we are on both ways.
Yeah. So what I can do is I can rerun like my, and I. I can look at everything conceptually, I do run everything through a CAD program to figure out what it actually fits, so I mean, everything we design is is running through a cross-section, looking exactly how it fits into driveways, I can give a lot more pronounced answer. A better answer, what would what would it take by actually running a thirty-foot model through this area. Um. Hoping to leave a curb in on one side if possible, cause that. Would definitely be the best, but if it's not possible, then I would certainly let you know.
I think if you curb it on the east side. Right.
I'd say for the most part, the east side where the curb cuts are should be relatively close to where they were before. So um. Yeah, if we can leave those in, that'd probably be the best.
Okay, we've lost, I mean, if anything, I think. It's either.
But we can, like you said, if you get a driven curb, I will curb. Try to get over its bars and get it. Where we got a good base, we don't have to reevaluate, subgrade everything, start over.
Yeah, so at in in front of the addresses is two oh five and two oh seven, it was twenty-nine to thirty feet at one point, so. It. Did it function well enough at that width? I mean, i- if if the goal is to put it back to where it was and not make it worse. We can just widen it to what that was. Um.
No, not as well as.
Right. Yeah, so from back of curb to back of curb, it's twenty-nine feet, four inches right now, so if we eliminate an eight-inch curb, twenty-eight feet, uh eight inches, you know. We just wanna try to get another foot and four inches to get to thirty feet, and you can park on top of that curb. That's.
If you keep moving stuff forward.
And the secondary thing is, we're talking about a ten-foot bump out, does that now become an eight-foot parking stall instead of a ten-foot parking stall, which I think that would probably want to be reduced. If the road entirely moved on the west side accordingly. Uh eight feet's still plenty to park on. It's the the seven to eight feet is standard for a residential urban driveway, urban parking.
So okay, with all of this. When you're talking, you're gonna come on and do this, this is the wrong way, is that, if you're gonna make easy decisions, the goal to run your free-living calculations. Is that still even doable, or?
Yeah, so I can run cross-sections, um. It's a pretty easy edit for me just to say.
At nine o'clock every night, you'll be able to get all that stuff back up, done, you're back all the way by ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, morning.
I've been up since four, so I don't know if I'll get it done tonight or tomorrow morning, so it's a, it's a, I'll do what I can to get it done as early as I can, but. Uh by nine o'clock tomorrow morning, I'm not gonna have new cross-sections in, so. Um. What I can look at uh is getting the removals marked at least. Um. If we know that curb's coming out, we need to let the contractor know so they can pull it, that's. The immediate concern for the contractor.
Doesn't matter what happened, that curb going out.
I'm being told the road's being widened, so that's a.
So that's that's safe.
That's that's my assumption right now.
If you look at that, or. Right over there. Will like to the west side or the south. So you can gain that foot and hatch it back, you don't have that for whatever, or if you want, maybe. Maybe you can get a couple inches more out.
The last three.
What's that?
The last three.
That what was told?
Uh well, from our survey, uh the middle of the block was at most thirty feet wide edge to edge of blacktop. Um.
So she's saying three feet, you're saying eight inches.
Um so it's a twenty-eight feet right now, we could gain inches, but by going to a drive over, we could gain more if you move the curb, but.
Right.
Like before we told them the blockway last week, what did the engineer tell us?
Last time they told me they took a foot and a half up, so.
Those, yeah, he's he's got some round numbers, but that that that's, the road wasn't straight, and so. Uh so.
Last thing, the rules, even by moving the curb over to the, whatever. You're gonna still have your straight road.
Yeah, we'll straighten it out from where it was for sure, yeah, we're we're not gonna. Move it around and change the width anywhere in here, so whatever we do.
And you're not, by doing that, you're not gonna lose anything. By gaining.
Yeah. I mean, I could throw it out there, but if that last. Lot on the west side. Um. Where there may be less parking need. Well, on the south side of block, where maybe there's a little less on-street parking need, uh if we left that curb in there, that's the ribbon curb that's already been forward. Um we could widen. Somewhere in that area instead of taking everything else. Cause I don't, my understanding right now, and I can be corrected, is that that doesn't have the parking need as we do further north. So if we could conceptually be just talking about the. Curb for the last two hundred and fifty feet on the west side versus three hundred and seventy-five feet, or whatever that is.
So what you wanna do is you wanna mark that right away and pick that out. And then then you, so you wanna get out there, pick that out, pick that out.
Let's just, let's just say I'll I'll be out here at ten o'clock instead, so I can at least run this through a a basic CAD model. And so I don't wanna pull it out and then realize it just doesn't work, and then be back to uh putting it back to where it was, I don't want that to happen, I don't think that's going to happen. But I'd feel a little more confident if I at least run through my CAD program, the contractor's gonna be back out on Monday pouring concrete. Bringing their curb machine in, so. Um we have until Monday morning to get that pulled out and get everything put back in without delaying the the project.
Okay, so based on all this conversation uh and everything, is the council okay with uh Randy and Steve kinda coordinating with? With, you know, Lon and Chris and the property owners, kind of get some of this stuff straightened out, rather than like Lon said, have a special meeting every three days?
I'm fine with that, I don't know.
He wants to, are you?
Responsibility or not?
It's questioning to you and Andy and you see.
I don't, I don't want a meeting every three days either.
So. Yep, and and if, but we won't get there without without him running his models, so. So we need to give him time to do that.
So there we made it.
And you'll keep the rest of the council in the loop though with whatever is decided that we get, you know?
Well, I mean, the group would come would be. Chris coming up with the final report or whatever, you know, I I don't. I don't, I don't wanna be sending stuff out on the viewers to Randy or Steve, I mean, I mean, it's Chris is the one that's gonna be doing the final denying, whatever he said is, you know, hopefully he thought it could have gone out by the back door of the company.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, any further discussion?
Just gotta link a mine though, if you go over a curb on that side.
Where the ribbon curb is as wide it used to be, yeah.
But now, okay, so you're out here at nine o'clock tomorrow morning, is it worth getting together with you tomorrow at noon or not? Or are you just, is that just more of a word session for you to get stuff straightened in mind?
Or is it better Friday?
More time the better, I'll say that much, um if I if I have time to review it, go through it, and then give you more finite answers, you probably prefer that me saying I need to check again, so.
In general, that's a good time for you guys to take the time on Friday morning or anything or whatever, that uh that it was a walk, you could be around.
I would resolve whatever.
So if if we say, for the goal is we wanna. Maybe maybe if you if you guys could be around at seven thirty, if you need with Chris, Noel, or whatever, make sure you're on our end stage, by fall thirty, we come up and come up. We could be down in the area, assuming the weather's decent, and meet with the property owners and tell them this is what we're thinking, try to get it set up so that then. Give that high back for whatever, like a couple of curbs taken out, get ready to move, starting next week, get a report here.
I'm good with that.
And so then, you're gonna take the west side curb off and put that for right here, right?
It needs to be up before Monday morning. So the contractors go on to it as soon as possible, so they can put in a truck.
But it's gonna go all the way up until you have to say approved, that's it, they're basically being with that hour right here.
The only, only thing that would change that is I is I alluded to just just a little bit ago is if. Would we all leave the ribbon curb portion in at least, and then just widen after that?
Just right at the very end and down like that, whole house right in the corner, the ribbon curb in, was that?
I don't have a problem with a complete.
I would say that that's a fair thing, I don't think that that got narrowed down there, and and.
Slightly wider.
Parks down there, so the only place that the parking comes into play in the width of the road becomes an issue is starting at more numerous system, and then. Outside of that, I mean, I have two, I have two parked those. Driveways at my house.
If there's a potential issue, Chris can get them all, you can go out and you have somebody by thirty minute anyway, right?
There you go.
All right. Sounds good, all right, be looking for a motion to adjourn. Got a motion, you get a second. Hold this in a second, I'll just be say hi, on the same side. Your adjourn.